Six oh one, that one's slow. Okay, we called the meeting to order on the planning commission Tuesday, July fifteenth at six o'clock. Just need to stop saying special meetings, this is our meeting time. Uh, roll call.
All members present with the exception of Ted Streithaus, and we hope he's doing well.
And I will skip the opening statement by chair because everybody here has a grant. Considerations of any changes, additions, or removals to the agenda? This is something that Jason, uh, Jason Jared is gonna add something, but he's not here. He told me he was gonna be here and get it exactly right, so I'm gonna skip that. I'm not gonna add it this time, hopefully it'll be there, it's my better way of straight out and friendly. Uh, Charlotte, you're not able to speak to what Jared wanted to get to the agenda, add to the agenda?
I thought he wanted to add something to the select board, and I know about that, but I don't know what this one's about, sorry.
Oh, okay, sure, so I'm gonna wait till my statement ends. But just briefly, I'll just mention one is uh, when we change the interior alteration thing, he's running into problems because if somebody wants to put in a twenty thousand dollar rug, and they have to go get a permit now because of how changed up. But um, the DRB is saying we're not gonna need for somebody putting in a twenty thousand dollar rug. So he wants to spare the language so that it's not understood that they have to, uh, need to make that change. But it should be understood anyway, but I guess they're having trouble when they bring it into the town office. Cam and Hula, they're saying we're not gonna sign up on this, as the DRB should have, it should have seen.
They have, they have no discretion in the office, like.
I don't know, but it's a problem, yes, who wants to bring it up at this meeting, so.
Well, next time.
Yeah, next time, moving on. Okay, approval of minutes for June twenty four, two thousand twenty five?
Yeah, I think I screwed up somebody's name.
Yeah, this Judy Bullen and my sister, your name.
Yeah.
Uh, it says I called William.
Yes, you called.
I caught that.
Um, uh, I do have a question. Do you want a motion first?
Oh, yeah.
I made a motion.
That's second to none.
Okay, I have a question. Under considerations. Oh, never mind. Now that I read it, now I understand what it that, what I have a question, sorry.
Oh, we two, these, these ones are all fixed on this one.
Yeah, I'm just.
It's uh, May twenty seventh, you know, this like.
May twenty seventh.
Oh, May twenty seventh.
I remember.
I believe so.
Yeah.
No, I've got May twenty seventh in front of me, and then, that's right.
Oh, yeah, this is our one, this is.
It's not this one. And June.
Oh, that's all we got in this time.
Twenty fourth. June twenty fourth. Uh, let's see. Pulling, yeah, it is June twenty fourth. It says pulling.
Yeah, and I did send that one to everybody.
Yeah, so I'll fix that for the next one.
Okay, um, any discussion? We already got a motion to, oh, we have to get, uh, change, right?
No.
Approval of the minutes, you don't have to.
The minute.
No.
I'm gonna do it because you want to reach Pauline, okay?
No, just approve as corrected.
Alright.
As correct.
Okay, all those in favor, so if I may say hi?
Bye.
The, the minutes, the minutes of the packet are May twenty seventh.
Yeah, they are, the ones I sent to are the thirty minutes, the ones about.
And I got the twenty fourth here.
The ones on mine are the thirty minutes, yeah.
Okay.
Did you wanna remove some first, or accept them?
No, just the same.
Okay. Okay, moving on. Comments for some of the sense? Mr. Alden, I put it back in the meeting of the meeting.
Just for you?
Yeah, just for you.
Wasn't just for me, but I appreciate that it's there.
I know, I'm joking.
Thank you.
Do you have a chance?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Alright, um, items of business, we got Martha here with us, you know, you'd have to get that municipal planning grants, we had her help. Um, she and I met through Zoom last, during last week, and um, she's here to talk to us about, even though we had some items that we already worked on in Townzoning that hadn't all been approved. The three that went forward, where we brought four to the select board, and then those four, three went forward, three of those um, sections. Um, and then we worked on another four sections, plus the one we needed to fix. And so she said, because of new legislation that passed since, we've opened up those, A L T U K. Martha, do you want me to share a document, or do you want me with?
Um.
You get us rolling?
You wanna look at the, the ones that we talked about, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, the ones we talked about, that we need to maybe cover more changes on.
Sure. Let me pull those.
Uh, Martha, do you go through the entire document, give me all all the missing definitions and all of that stuff? And what we need to work on according to um, one eighty one? And forty six actually still, and what's the latest one? Anyways, if you guys like, you know about, these are attachments.
Uh, can I share?
Can, can you request it?
Um, sure, is it?
I'm here, it's.
You have to, I just like.
No, I didn't ask you, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay, sorry about that.
So this one was easy, the only thing I had asked you to change was the citation. To forty four fourteen, it's three A, not three two. So, that's an easy one.
Am I closer to you, so she'll hear it?
Yeah. Sorry. Is that, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna have to pull each one of them up, so bear with me.
So everybody's okay with that change, just set stuff, the citation, just needs to be changed on that one. Spacing those, if you could just correct.
Hmm.
I can pull them up too, if you're running into any sort of technical issues.
Okay, yeah.
We've done those.
Microsoft is saying it's contacting the server, it's being slow, so. Alright, so I need to stop sharing that one. Share this one. Share. Okay, so this is the administrative review, again, it looked like you were just changing from village RC, which is what was in the village one, to several of the districts that are in the town.
Okay, so we're gonna step forward.
So my question was, it said um, town RC, but it looks like you have a town RC one and a town RC two. Do you want both of those in there?
Yeah, yeah, we do, right? But I love, um, for change of use, if something's involved, doesn't that part in everything else?
Yeah.
Remember they, they choose whether.
The officers.
Yeah, would be officers.
Okay, so there's more.
Except for places where they're under um, a beauty, right? That would separate for that.
So like the mountain district, you would not include?
Yeah, that's why I'm just talking about the Jackson Water District.
Um.
What do you think?
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to study all your districts to see where it might be appropriate or not appropriate, but.
So we need to like backtrack to this?
Um, yeah, just to double check if there's any others.
But the, the whole point is so that it's, it was just a change of use. And already have everything all set up, all we need to do is go.
All the districts.
All the, all the districts, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with that. So I was just thinking, uh, Jackson Water District has its own, so, and stuff, but I think that's good.
Okay.
It's a statewide thing anyway.
Yeah, and it, I mean, it's just retail to retail, so.
Yeah, retail to retail.
Okay, yep, okay.
But I'm, I was gonna say that whoever you get to be, the planning, from the planning office, they need to have more responsibility. Like Rose wasn't comfortable with adding more responsibility. She thought that, like, fire and her place, her, that she may answer, she could be the jury. But the new person might not feel that way. And Jared, Ms. Sharon, we have this um, advisory committee, and we can have the fire chief on, and the police chief, we can confirm with them if we need to. So the new administrator might take on more responsibilities than she was comfortable with.
Yeah, Karen.
Yeah.
Does, does the language allow the administrator to say, hey, this is something that's a little more complex? Let's say it's DRB, but maybe there's norms there, then we'll.
Yes, yes, so I mean, your expression, yeah, for sure, your expression.
Yeah.
So for the affordability to section two ninety, there's now language in statute that requires you to round up specifically. And you did have language saying rounding under number one there. You just didn't have, you didn't say it was rounding up. And then also down here, oops. Um, the language is read there. That for affordability, you get an additional forty percent rounded up to the nearest building, so.
That's a good catch. Yeah, it's rounding, it could be, yeah, or a little, it could be different.
So what should I say, it's forty percent, or is it? Do I have to, come up with?
Yeah, it's the officers, you're doing your check here. And your staff.
Okay, this was the, it's the listing of uses for which you have limited uh, your jurisdictions, and they added, Act one eighty one added hotels and motels that are being converted to permanently affordable housing developments as a required limitation. Um, under B there, you had your list of things that are exempt. And then down under number seven, you exempt group homes. So the state has added recovery residences to that. So in addition to group homes, you don't have to, you don't have to exempt either one, but however you're treating them, just add that and treat them in the same way. So I just added recovery residents throughout there, and then there is a definition that will need to be added to the definition section when we get my mouse out of there. So. All pretty, you know, standard boilerplate stuff. So beyond that.
Do you want to take a look at the one where maybe you're in the word stamped? Which was the only, remember where the one that did get accepted by the select board, because they have the word stamped on the plan?
Okay, which section was that?
Um, which section was that? Right, you remember that one?
No.
That was, every year you were, you were in there. Yeah, there was one in the smart one, did you accept that we had changed because it had the word stamped that the person would have to get their, their George Tucker Junior was saying, some people come in basically, but it just spread a lot of papers, and if that's acceptable. But we had the word stamped in there, and so, some people, uh, some of the public that came, and some people in select board were come people without words, and they didn't pass that for us, they didn't, they didn't enact that. So we're gonna just take out the word stamped, bring it out to them. I'm trying to remember what section it was.
Yeah, I was gonna challenge that, but I don't, I don't think it's that essential.
I'll see if I have it.
So that must have been one that you were working on and suggesting, 'cause it's not in the draft that I have, my working draft.
Yeah.
So I, I haven't seen it, I guess.
I'll figure it out for next time, maybe. Were you gonna go over one eighty one and other change, or you wanna do next one?
Um, well, I kinda wanted to get a sense from you all how you wanna go about it, I mean, there's, there's Act forty seven and one eighty one that the document's gonna need to be compatible with. There's the, the village changes, and I summarized those, I don't know if you forwarded that to everyone. Um, oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, I said everything.
Oh, you did, okay, okay, yep, so.
You sent to me. Yeah.
Okay, so it just, do you wanna make all those changes?
Yes.
So that they're completely compatible, I mean, that's, okay.
Yes, definitely, we want to make those changes, right?
Okay.
One eighty one, forty seven, what do you?
So one eighty one, forty seven, and the village?
And the village.
You wanna make all those compatible?
Yes.
So I mean, I can just work on that.
Okay.
And get as far as I can before your next meeting, we can look at, you know, however far I've gotten, and go over that.
Sounds great.
Um, I think maybe more involvement would be for looking at the districts, the maps for the districts. Do you wanna make any changes to the maps or the uses? I mean, you'll have to make some changes to the uses based on forty seven and one eighty one. And same with dimensional requirements, there's gonna be some minimum lot size changes and things like that, so um, I know last time, I think we, and I don't know if I could come up with a massive enough list to look at all the different uses in all the different districts, and whether they're permitted or conditional, but somehow we should go through all that, I think.
Yeah.
And also look at the, the maps, and I did notice that it looks like your current zoning map isn't necessarily by parcel boundary, and I don't know if that's been a problem in the past, where someone's parcel is partly in one district and partly in another. I don't know, maybe Jared might have thoughts on that. Um, so that's a question, do you wanna try and change that so that they're not?
Yeah, part of a parcel is one in one district.
Right.
You wanna clean that up?
Right, we can see what happens.
And I know one of the concerns was there are some neighborhoods where it's partly in the village and it's partly in the town. And so there's different regulations for the end that's in the village versus the end that's in the town, even though they both have water, they both have sewer, they both, you know, everything's the same, but because of that dividing line, they're treated differently, and the, the, you know, the grant application said you wanted to resolve that, so.
Yeah.
I mean, one issue, I think, I think it's Pleasant Street that is one of them. There's also a flood plain nearby, and so part of that neighborhood is kind of sandwiched between a railroad and a flood plain. So whether that's appropriate or not, I mean, I think that needs to be discussed, um, 'cause.
I play basically all of Pleasant Street's stations, sandwiched between, I play railroad tracks, all of it.
Yeah, so I mean, on paper, it might look like that's a good idea, but maybe in reality, it's, it's not a good idea. So just something that's gonna need further discussion, I think.
Okay.
Um, and you all know the town a lot better than I do, you can look at the map probably and say, oh, that's where this is, and that's where that is.
So did you and I meet again before the next meeting, or, or we do, we have some maps to print in the street board? To look at those.
Sure, I mean, I, I have one, I, I'm happy to make multiple copies. Uh, hard copies, if it's easier to look at, and I can probably even make bigger ones. Um, unfortunately, our mapping person, who was new in January, has left already, so if we do need to make changes, uh, it could be a, a challenge, um, anyway, so your zoning map. And I was looking, for example, I was looking at, um, I mean, it's kind of far outside of town, I don't know that you'd consider it walking distance, but the Freedom Hill area apparently has, oh, it's all has sewer, part of it also has water, and then, but part of it's in town residential, commercial one, and part of it's in town residential. And does that make sense? You know, just these, these type of questions about your districts.
Yeah, the bottom of the road goes for the bungee, the rest is really far away, from the village.
Yeah.
It's, I was, plus I go back to the same, I think the people in Pleasant Street would be very upset to find out, look at that gas station, because that, you know, that side of Pleasant Street is all so commercial, and across the street, it's all residential.
Right.
Where we were talking about last time, we were talking about how that might work out for efficient parking? If we had diagonal parking on just the commercial side of Pleasant Street? But I think, I talked to Tini Snyder about this, when she was in Pleasant Street, I think she would die at the gas station, decide to call Pleasant Street. It's completely residential.
Yeah.
It's on the other side of Main Street, but I have thought it up until Friday, so this is.
So and also, as we've discussed, I, I did ask Jason about the open house idea, and he wa, he wasn't, you know, he hadn't come up with any specifics really, but I was thinking that once you have looked at the districts, if you're, if you do change, whatever you change, boundaries, uses, dimensional um, requirements, having the open house at that point where you can say, well, this is what, how it was, this is what we wanna change, just having tables set up, maybe two districts per table, have planning commission members, and I can, and I can usually with the open house, people can kinda come and go, like, you're open from five thirty to seven thirty, so depending on their schedule, they can drop in, they can look around, they can ask questions. It's not, it's less formal than having, everyone having to be there at the same time and doing a presentation, and.
It's also obviously.
And food, yes, food, especially if it's dinner time.
I guess I missed this, but there will be an open house for what exactly?
Well, whenever we start, I mean, you know, admitting a new document, especially when we start developing a town plan, we're supposed to win the public first, because if you, if you just do it to them, and then show them a public hearing, they feel like it's being done to them. But if you invite them first, then they feel part of the process, and you give your input, and it guides your, you know, decision making and stuff.
So this open house, would this be for the district maps, or bigger?
It'd be for any changes that they wanna have to their districts, or.
For the new town plan.
We perceive, um, also, bringing out for Townzoning, you know, looking at these districts, it's like the Lakes District, the Lock District, you know, Jackson Water is its own district, and I, in the past, when we moved at Townzoning that way, we invited people that live in those districts, like, I was telling, I was telling Martha about this, that it would finally get into the Lakes District during the summer, because more people are along that, at the lake, that live in the Lakes District.
So the open house would be to look at possible changes to the zoning districts themselves, right?
Yeah, and maybe also share with them changes to after, because of one eighty one and forty seven.
So I was thinking, rather than do it at the beginning when you don't really have anything to show, once you've, if you work on the districts fairly early on,
Yeah.
you can do it once you have a before and after for people to look at.
Let's get to my break, this one does it have to be done by?
Two thousand twenty seven.
April, okay, two, twenty twenty seven.
April twenty seven. And plus, and then we also have to get the town plan done, right? In twenty seven?
Uh, yeah, I guess you do, but we, but yeah, but we don't.
And Jason said that before. So I told him, should we, when you're looking at both simultaneously? And he goes, oh, no, we won't find it anytime next year for the town plan, plus the, the grant, to get you guys' help on that, because I mean, um, around until September, he said, to apply for that grant, and we'll be able to help extra money. So see, I watched your whole workshop on the municipal plan, and I was like, it takes two years, we're gonna start doing this anytime. So that's why I was asking if you should work on it simultaneously.
Yeah. Yeah.
But I know your grant.
I can only work with you on zoning, but, but um.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, after your session tonight, I'm gonna be working on the town plan a bit tonight, do some goal setting. She said in our last meeting that we wanted, um, maybe, she's gonna lead us in a goal setting activity, because she was the superintendent for years and years, and the principal before that, she has an activity. She's gonna lead us on, um, and I know from that municipal plan Zoom session, I also watched, um, I was gonna say. Oh, yeah, it's very important that every single goal can be implemented.
Right.
Like, and then, that's gonna be part of when they accept it or not, this tennis ball actually being implemented.
Right.
That's gonna be just a timer for that, it's, it's serious, I mean, in the past, we've done it, and pretty much didn't think at it after that, except for that you really agree with that, so.
Yeah.
It's all about implementation, John?
Um, what was the, what's the reason behind changing dis, zoning districts?
Only to comply with one eighty one and forty seven, where it's like people have issues, or we have things that we wanna accomplish, like our board does. So ideally, we're just going to hold it first, and get all the information, but it's fit to have, and you're about the same, it's good to have a planning place to see if they comply with that or not, and also share what we need to change.
Yeah, what's an example of like where we're not compliant with the rules in the legislation?
So in districts where there are, in, in areas where there's water and sewer, and, and year-round residential uses are allowed, there's certain uh, lot sizes and densities that you have to allow, there are certain types of uses, like multifamily housing, that you have to allow, and there, that, that's not all compliant currently, so.
Yeah, so there may be an area that's a commercial area, but it has water, sewer, and there's residential use. We need to make that more appropriate for residential.
Right, if, if it's not currently, for example, not currently allowing.
Excuse me. Excuse me, Martha, you're going to need to talk into the.
Oh, sorry.
You can hear, you can hear, that microphone will pick up the voice.
It will?
Okay, um, yeah, say it doesn't allow multifamily housing as a permitted use, maybe it's a conditional use, but it's supposed to be a permitted use under those circumstances.
Yes, it really changes the health of the day first, but, you know, we'll take the, look at the district, and it was like this too, and also on goals setting tonight, she gives ideas about what needs to happen in districts to accomplish the goals that we want to accomplish. Yeah, it's like, we're gonna make public goals, and also gonna make sure it's, we're gonna work with the budget, and when they make the budget, so we'll be there to make them do it, what we hope is, the select one trust to use, like, we will write this, make it a budget.
Alright, so you're looking at maybe having a capital plan or as part of it?
Yeah, basically, yeah.
Yeah, okay, sounds good.
Yeah.
Yeah. So and then the other thing that I was talking to them a few minutes ago, just, there are places where lots are bisected by district boundaries, and is that desirable or not, you know, so. And there could be people from those districts who, if you do change it one way or the other, who are gonna say, no, I want it the other way. If you're gonna push my parcel into one district or the other, I'd rather have it in the other district, and, you know, so.
Good way, I need to ask them, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, so are, do you have anything else you wanna share with us, Martha, or can we just talk about what we'll do next time?
Um, so you all saw the summary of the changes, and.
I don't think I heard you all.
I don't think there was any, I mean, I can share them so that everyone else can see them, if.
Yeah, I mean, is there, do you have anything else, could you move it over?
Yeah.
What should I do with my notes?
Just went through the entire document, so probably the summary of changes, I think, for us to state changes, state statutes.
Terry, do you have that copy?
Of, of that.
Of the summary of changes? Can you share that with me so I can put it at the end of the minutes?
You have sent it to me right now. That's, that's a tough.
Alright, so I'm not sharing, share.
Oh, yeah, it's quick, this decision is quick.
Yeah, so these are all the sections that you made changes to in the village, and some of them you've already worked on. So. Like I said, I'll just go through them and make as many changes as I can. There will be probably some. That were changed further after you made the changes to the village, so as, you know, by Act one eighty-one or something.
Is it a new village or town zone?
This is the village, these are the.
Number is the same anyway.
The numbers are all the same, which is great and and.
Change it at the same time.
Yeah.
That's good.
The, um, one that may need some discussion, parking. I mean, you've made a lot of changes to the village parking, but there were some more changes to Act one eighty-one. Um, I know Jason did the sign section for you last time, so. Was that, you wanted everything to be the same?
Right, I saw the left.
Yeah, okay. So, and then there were just all these definitions.
Oh, yeah.
That you either eliminated or revised or added, so.
Yeah, I feel like we just.
For the village, yeah. Oh, if they consolidate this year, it's gonna be a pretty big document to add all the village stuff into the town, but I just.
Yeah, it should be easy if you do consolidate the town and the village, because the documents will be so similar, yeah. So, I mean, unless there's more that you guys wanna talk about, I'm I'm all set.
Thank you.
Okay, so our direction for next time, I know you and I are gonna leave, but for next time, we're gonna get that standpoint down. Um, just gonna go, start going down your list there, or do you wanna jump ahead to, um, specific districts to have that ready before? The end of summer?
Well, let's talk about it, um.
Okay, we'll talk about it.
I I mean, I do think we should do that fairly early on.
Okay.
But maybe I can do a little both, um.
And I hear you saying too, you know, the part of the parcel, that all that stuff going there, for the five, that's important to be got right away too.
There's, you know, I have a bunch of different things that I've been able to find. I have a rough one of. The. Water and sewer with the village, just showing where the village is relative to that. But there's also the neighborhood development area.
Thank you.
Pretty good.
Yeah.
That also doesn't, I mean, that shows the water and sewer and it shows. The village center and it shows the quarter mile around the village center, but then it doesn't show stuff like, um. Where the actual village boundary is.
Yeah.
Or the flood plain, so, you know. In my perfect world, I've got a map that shows everything, but, um, so. With our map guide. Right. Yeah, I've been trying to look at them side by side and they're on different scales too, so then. But, uh, um, yeah, with our map guide on it, it may take a while. So, but.
Okay, Ryan, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
And we all got our cutie fries, yeah, I appreciate it.
No problem.
So that will be for the meeting on August nineteenth.
Right, that's.
Not the one on the twelve.
No, the one on the twelve is for the, is a public hearing.
Right, okay, just making sure.
Which I hope you hear for, I hope you know from like, our board meeting. You know, that there's that much from term rentals and long term rentals, because they could be the.
Correct.
On this twelve. Well, we can put the points back to the.
See, that's a Tuesday.
They're both Tuesdays. And then the food truck.
That's on the fifth.
Oh, it's fifth.
Which is interesting because we have a water commission meeting at five. And the food truck at five thirty, and a trustees at six.
So it's a food truck, it's a hearing?
It's a public hearing, yeah. And they already had the first public hearing, which I. And that was, this is the right beginning of. What? Yeah, you do. Okay, thank you so much, Martha.
You're welcome.
Judy's gonna lead us in our show. And for yearly goals.
There we go. So. Like particularly fun. And I, I just have a question. I don't know if you can, but I didn't know if no one wanted to join us as a liaison.
Yeah, well, you wanna join us as a liaison, or just.
That's why I needed to work out the toes.
Up in your ears and technology.
I can, I can just bring it over to you.
I can, I'm trying.
It's really, yeah, okay, here, it's running, so.
We're gonna, we get to stand, I'm just trying.
So. What we're gonna do is ask. Questions. No, that's right. And everybody's coming up, what markers? So what we wanna do is come up with a, by the end of this activity, the goal is to try and reach a consensus. On goals that we would like to prioritize, doesn't mean, in my opinion. That you can't work on other things during the year, but there are some things that we feel like we should be working on and prioritizing this year. So I know Terry asked you to write five goals, it, you know, it can be. It doesn't have to be written in a bold form, it could just be like, we're on parking, okay, just kind of real quick. This is gonna be like a brainstorm activity, so the rules are no talking, just writing. And you're gonna have about two to four minutes to write your goals or what you think we should be working on, as many as you can. As you think are important, doesn't have to be five, it can be seven, eight, it can be two or three. But things you think we should be working on in the next year.
One on each sticky.
One on each sticky, thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
There we go, that was an important question. It's parking soon, or should I add? Uh.
I think you should add it.
We'll add it, we're. One free to stick. So what you need to do, and you can do it now, everyone, just stick these up on those papers on the.
You wanna try to put the same subjects on the same paper? Okay, sorry. Yeah, sorry. I was teaching for forty years, you're gonna swap.
There's always one in every class.
Always, no, it all.
That was gonna be, let's, let's switch. Alright, so. So, what we're gonna do. Terry, just kidding, is categorizing like which of all these ideas. Can they be put into categories on page? So if somebody wants to read them out loud and. Just so I'll read them out loud if you're okay with that, and then I'll ask somebody to come up and just start quietly. No commenting, categorizing them on two pages, you wanna read them out loud, right? Okay, increase electric chargers in village, first step toward energy independence. Transportation, village parking, parking, river walk. Align town and zoning, town and village zoning as much as possible. Higher density developed in the village with infrastructure, attracting industry for year-round employment. Higher density in village for housing, event business and industry. Affordable housing plan, housing sealed family, affordable housing.
Incentives.
Incentives, thank you. Um, recommendations plan for future growth and development. Land use regarding the historic district and urban centers, so planning for that or developing. Infrastructure, village parking plan and financing options. Incentives for new development, review ordinances. Increase village parking and habitat spaces, create capital improvement plan. Create SOP for execution of goals, how to execute. Pedestrian safety, village and Route one hundred north. Village revitalization, what do we want to plan? What do we want Main Street to look like in twenty years, lockability, bikeability, sidewalks, wastewater upgrades and extension. Sidewalks, grants, granite curbing, question mark, economic development. Why doesn't new biz want to move to one, but residential housing. Incentives, tax subsidies, education.
Okay, I saw an intense answer up there, you sent them to me and you wrote them out.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so. Who, maybe two people, wanna get up there and start moving them as you think they could be things that have a common theme? Terry, do you have anything else?
No, it's moving.
So put all the horrible housing ones together maybe?
Just do it silently, you know, it's not supposed to be talking.
Oh, sorry.
And. Actually, everybody can do it, but we'll have these two do it.
Judy, I love this, I think this is like a great, I was just thinking of like you're doing the town plan again. You have some open house and and I think we did like the river project, they had an open house and like.
Many, many times.
Worked together on this, good pedestrian stuff down there.
I was gonna put out the horrible housing stuff on there.
Ryan, if you don't like what she's doing, feel free to move her somewhere. You can, you can have a little fucker, yeah, if you disagree. You want a different category, or if you see a new category developing out of this, like there's a whole bunch. And you say, oh, well, that's a little subset, feel free to move it into a new category.
I can see what you want to. Okay, I get, I get what you're doing. What's an SOP?
Standard operating procedure.
Okay, now the next step is to try and come up with, um, names of these categories that you could have. So if you want me to read them out loud, and this can be everybody, okay, so, this one.
Wait, is that a dry erase?
This one? No, that's. This one usually works. There are these. Yes, this one's affordable housing incentives, affordable housing plan. Residential housing incentives, tax subsidies, education. Affordable.
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing. We got one here, attracting industry for year-round employment. We got one here, attracting industry for year round employment.
We can all develop.
First step toward energy independence. Energy.
Energy.
Intentional, in, well, in, infrastructure. There are goods and all that, we have other infrastructure ones though.
Oh, like maybe put it down there, yep.
Intentional.
This one align town and zoning, town and village zoning as much as possible. Create capital improvement plan, economic development. Recommendations plan for future growth and development, land use development for historic and urban centers. Incentives for new development. Wouldn't this one go over there, or these go there?
Hmm.
Right, okay, suppose.
Some of those I don't know if it deserves the caveat, intentional economic development.
You want that? Just throw it up there. Um, I'm just facilitating. Let me have one for energy. Transportation. Transportation, yes. Creative. Create, sorry, I'm. I lost it. Create SOP for institutional goals, how to execute, cute, review ordinances. Slow lines.
Review.
Personally, I don't see how these go together.
Yeah.
They were, they could just be what we, yeah, outliers or others, okay?
Other.
Yeah.
Plus the order.
That's what happens when you just have like others, where you, and they don't really all go together. Other.
Administrative pathways.
This? Administrative path.
This tie it down.
Yep. Inflation. But transportation has nothing to do with affordability, it's more standard operating.
I think, I think transportation is gonna get moved to your last uh board there.
Oh, okay, 'cause I didn't see what you meant, so.
Oh, okay.
We'll just leave those for now, come back. Okay, so this is village revitalization, what do we want Main Street to look like in twenty years? Wastewater upgrades, extension, infrastructure. Pedestrian safety, village, Avenue one hundred north. Increase village parking, handicap spaces, village parking, village parking. Housing. Should be over there maybe? Sorry. Um, parking, parking, is parking its own? We've got a bunch of parking.
Get all, get under infrastructure, the infrastructure upgrades, that's what it would be.
Yep, that kinda makes good sense, infrastructure upgrades.
No, I thought it came on that street, it was about the village.
Well.
There you go. Like villagers revitalization stuff.
Village. Village, a river walk is necessarily a village. Higher density, high density sidewalks, infrastructure, re-infra-structure. And wastewater upgrades. A lot of them are village, but I think they impact the whole town, especially if we're thinking about their nature.
Especially in the fact that we should have let ourselves only looking at infrastructure and uh, what I would call arbitrary village line. Infrastructure needs to go, our infrastructure needs to go together, right?
Right. Okay.
Maybe energy goes, I don't know, that makes.
Where's the, oh yeah, energy would be under here, that first step. Could, would be in infrastructure as well, because you know, maybe we put solar in. It's like that. Okay, so, you have four categories. And what you get to do now, to give us an idea of what everybody really wants to work on, which are priorities, is everybody gets to vote with dots. Okay? You each get a packet of twelve dots, doesn't matter what color you use. But what you're gonna do is you're going to vote on the things that you think are most important. And you can use as many or as few dots as you want, and if you don't think it's important, don't go nowhere. And that will show us the priority.
Can put it on the, or on the chart?
Yeah, vote with, right, right.
Wherever you want.
In the category?
In the category.
Oh, in the category.
In the category that you want.
Okay, you can put all
Yeah.
Twelve on one.
You could put twelve on one. You could put none on one.
You're voting for the entire category and not the individual sticky one.
Yeah, that's not my question.
Yes. It's just the category. But that, but then that will tell us that's what we want to work on, and we've got ideas that we want to look at already, so we'll have to transcribe them.
I can take a picture of them and transcribe them?
Yeah.
Later.
Okay. Twelve votes. Okay, this is chairs, you have to approve. And you can take the remainder of these dots and just dot each other. I'll get it to you. Does somebody wanna help me too, please? Here, I'll get this one.
Twenty-three on infrastructure.
Are you, you're any getting?
One on other.
Wanna take a picture of them?
Yeah. And what did you say, this was twenty-three?
I already marked it.
Right. Uh, it looks pretty clear that you've got three main goals. Infrastructure upgrades, intentional economic development at seventeen. That one was at twenty-three, and then at nineteen, affordable housing. So, alright, is everybody in agreement with that?
I don't. Um, I, I just, I think we need to really all look at each other really hard and understand that affordable housing is very, we're in a very difficult environment for affordable housing. And that may, we may want to almost incentivize our surrounding communities and how to try to help our surrounding communities. I E Chester, Cavendish, for, for affordable housing, and then how do we transport those people to Luba? Putting in, putting in a hundred year apartment building in Luba. There's no.
But it could also be incentivizing year round rental payments.
Yeah, definitely.
You could do that too, you know, instead of people just renting here. These are seasonal rentals.
Incentive.
I think there's, I do think there's a small subset of people that are investment focused where if there was incentive, they would do it, but a lot of folks that fell, fall in Luba, Luba, Kima, they use it. Whether they use it one time or ten times a year, they, they use it. So that, that is difficult, um, but I think all of these are really tightly um connected where you know, there's, there's probably places as you head out of town uh one hundred north that could see sub development. It probably doesn't make sense until you have water and um, so with that infrastructure, there's more potential for the, for the housing, better infrastructure, more economic development. Um, one thing that is interesting that I, in my head, you know, I went to school in Burlington, parking does not seem like an issue to me in, in this area at all. Um, I live right in the village, so I walk, I walk everywhere, I'm young. Um, now that my grandmother's living in town, um, it's been very interesting seeing her perspective on park. Um, and it's a very different, different thing, and that's kind of where I, I added, I just wanted to do Main Street in twenty years of like who are we looking at? I need to look at, you know, myself, like, okay, I am, you know, we are an older population. Parking, especially handicap parking, is a very big priority. Me walking, you know, down to the high school for, for something, not a huge deal. Um, for other people, it is a very, um, very big deal, um, so.
And sidewalks.
Sidewalks, um.
Yeah, I walk a lot too.
Yeah.
I'm living in the village now, and I can see where, especially in winter, where sidewalks a lot safer.
If you're in a wheelchair in this town, trying to navigate, is, is difficult as it is right now.
Impossible.
The only time people in our village, soon enough, we take the old time people out there, with this parking issues, was in the winter. Or not in summer.
Yeah.
They had trouble parking. And I, I just wanna tell you, as an anti-violator, I know how good that feels. About the justice. There's recent stuff.
We didn't get that up there. What was that? Sorry, I missed it.
No.
I wrote it, but I didn't.
So, so I, I guess the only thing, the only thing I would add is that there is a natural progression to typically how this would work. So economic development, scores, infrastructure updates, we've got laws and opportunities. Right, so there is like, there is a set, there is a, um, step by step process in which you create, but the goal is to create opportunity, right, to create, you know, and biggest thing too is, um, the, the pedestrian safety thing, for me, um, I, I had to take a call this morning on a hundred north across from the gravy stand. And I almost saw, for fifteen minutes, I almost saw two accidents, I almost saw two people, yeah, just.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, why, I don't know what, I don't know what we're waiting for, if we're waiting for something to kill before we put up a yield, uh, a slow down sign or something. Um, you know, and I get that it's a state highway, but we, this town could have, and I told this in my tax, if, if the town of Luba put a sign on state highway, what would happen?
State kick jack.
Little mother.
Is what you said.
Little. So.
Who's gonna take a damn?
No, state.
So, yeah, you know, we put up, but still, it's, and you know, it's just, uh, you know, I think, I think we need to really be cognizant of that there is an order of operations to this type of work and what I think our overall goal is. And one thing that I was thinking about and stuck here is, we really need to agree on at least, at least eighty percent agree on an identity. What is, what is Luba, five years, ten years, what is, what are, what's the identity of this town, what do we want it to create it? I think if we were to ask each one of the members on this board that question, we'd have Starfleet in answer. And that, and that, I think that's core is where all the mo-, all the momentum, you know, and all the motivation for change stalls on is that we don't have a clear identity.
For your own individual definition of change, that won't true. Like each of us has our own definition of change.
True.
Yeah, so it's not, you know, there's not one that's right or one that's wrong, and it's been one or another sort of like that. 'Cause I think we've understood a lot of different viewpoints of town. To, one thing Martha and I talked about when we met was uh in such as that, you know, incentivizing people to invest in affordable housing, you know, residential housing. Is bringing a limit on those investment homes, like she was saying in Chester, there's a waiting list for short term rentals. And you can't, you know, buy a property in terms of short term rental, right, until, until another person stops telling that. They put like a, you said that in Rochester, right?
I think it's sixty-five, that's the cutoff.
Sixty-five, what?
Oh, Airbnb's or what?
Percent.
Rocks.
Sure, do it.
Sixty-five. And we have one thousand one hundred and twelve or something. And so I, I, maybe something like that is needed because they're just gonna heat up for investments in our town, there's no, there's no after. I wanna say, we don't want anybody living in our town that actually lives in our town. And that, you know, those people have to be shipped in for parks and Chester and everywhere else, so.
So, so Chester then must have an inventory of the number of short term rentals that.
Yeah, they have a registry. So far, it hasn't been an issue, people don't wait on the waiting list for very long, 'cause someone will do it for six months and say, you know what? I'm not really into cleaning up all the time and dealing with this, and then someone else do it, so.
Oh, percentage. Something to consider, but something to consider because we have so many, every year, you're gonna have to stop. Oh, and I, I talked about this a while ago, about incentivizing um, renting full time, you know, like year round, I mean, residents. And the idea that I read about an article was about, uh, Providence Town did this, and I, I don't know where it went, because I, this was about a year and a half ago, I read it, and it was a pilot program at the time. And what they did is they, they had a pot of money set aside, kind of like being something that down the road we could do, something that set plans, get some of that money.
Or rental registry accounts.
Right, or rental, yep, and, but what they did is they had a pot of money, and they had this chart, I mean, I actually went on their website, got the chart, downloaded everything. And it said, what it was to do is to give money of like, you know, like a grant or whatever to people that own the property to rent, to people who were full time residents that worked in the town. So it was building their base of workers, et cetera, because they couldn't get housing for those people. Then they had a thing like a studio apartment with one person that worked in the town got like a couple thousand dollars, you can get that per year, such, and then it went to like a studio apartment with two people, and, and it was a grid, and then it was a one bedroom, and then a two bedroom, and then a three bedroom, the highest was a three bedroom apartment with three people who worked in the town, so like they shared it. And I think that that was, like ten thousand, you know, they got something for it. Because think about what a three bedroom apartment or house in Compton's town would rent for a full season. You know what I mean? So it was to incentivize that we're gonna help our locals, workers who live in the town, so that we have people that can provide services, you know, you know, keep the town running. And I just thought that was like a wonderful idea, and I haven't followed up on it, but it's something that maybe I can. I actually told Bryn, it was too field trip to progress.
There's quite a few of those different incentive programs, there's the buybacks, there's, there's different things like that that I, I think would be great ways to incentivize, I think
Yeah, I mean, that's just.
you know. I think would be great ways to incentivize, I think, you know, local has been a destination for decades.
Yes.
It's if you went out and said, hey, no more short term rentals, that would be detrimental for the economy of this town. But how do we make sure this town stays down and it does stay viable with that? Uh so I I think those incentive programs are are a big thing to
And another thing and I somebody talked to me about and I was like, sure, that's legal, but it's kind of illegal to have. Was if you could designate certain neighborhoods, like grandfather, as full time residential home, like O O Ryan Thompson Adams, cause that's kind of what they're all, they might have one or two houses. But could you designate entire neighborhoods as full time residential?
And that was something that Alison and her husband studied that, would you know that? That was one of the regulations they had. The first one was a short term rental registry. I mean, the second line was to designate areas of your town for residential.
Oh, right, oh, the miles they do.
I haven't seen the final report yet.
Oh, you haven't seen that? Everything in town has
I don't think that, yeah, I don't think it stands up legally because
I didn't.
we can't do it based on zoning, just I know that in California, like when the rentals really started going off, I I think it was in uh Santa Barbara um and you couldn't legally do that, but I think there's ways to say, hey, we really, these these neighborhoods, residential, how can we work on um incentivizing that that kind of activity of keeping it keeping it local, uh the D restrictions stuff, yeah.
The digital costs.
To help our town. Right, that's what she was suggesting, criticizing stuff.
The one thing I see like, hey, this is something you guys mentioned, well, that family's on there for decades, they go to sell. And a year ago, when we didn't have it restricted, that place was worth five hundred thousand dollars and now it's worth two fifty.
Uh huh.
That's uh the balancing act, the
Yeah.
That's that's kind of a point, uh me saying, you know, affordable housing, you know, the answer may not be Lutlo is because the economics of this town, that's not, you can't control that, you know, it's an analogy standpoint, that's controlled by reality. Right, so what's a what's a property worth in Lutlo, the town can't, town can't control that, that's realistic and so, you know, being really cognizant of uh homeowner homeowner rates and um not going down a path of putting a lot of effort and um putting a lot of effort and resources into something that could very easily challenge the core, you know, so.
And although I said that, I said I don't like it, I have to say that it's always designed to end up, it's totally something that's illegal.
Which, yeah. As a strategy. Uh so and and you know, and it's more, it's it's the common sense test to me really is that you you know, if you try to tell anybody that owns property how to use their property. It's like Terry, if I told you what plants you could plant on your property, you know.
That's very U H O K.
Tell it, it works, right, you know.
I love my house, I love it.
Yeah, sure, well, of course, I mean, of course, you know, to to prove point on your your answer, but again, it's like if you you know, we have to control, we we can only control, we can control.
I'll share her husband's side of the house because I'm probably not saying it the way she
Sure.
she rented it, but she was, you know, she had perfect examples all over the country of where they do this.
Sure, so like in Telluride, they do it where if you're gonna buy a house, but it's D, it's heavily D covered restricted, so you have to live there. If you if you so you're eligible for uh one percent interest, you know, fixed fixed rate, you're eligible for uh alcohol uh debt uh
Just buy a sentence.
Have have It's incentive, so but but you have to live there full time, you have to work in Telluride. You any roommates you have have to show working or something, work in Telluride. And you know, if you don't, you 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 literally could lose their arm, there's language, you lose the house, you know, so it's
So do they finances, do they have like a housing authority?
Yes, so it's basically, it's a it's a forgive, it's a um forgiving forgiveness loan, basically, so it's a, you know, so your down payment is uh well forgiveness, uh you have one percent fixed rate. But again, it's that if you fall out of line with the covenants of D, the house reverts back to the authority to be sold.
Yeah, Vermont has part of the housing itself out there too.
So.
Yeah.
But it's but it's about, but it's it's set up when you buy the house. You can't, you you have to start at when the house is built with its first owner. You can't just do this stuff, we can't go around and amend everybody's team.
No, no, personally, I am.
You know, so it has to be from from origin. And you know, and that and that needs and that needs that needs to be a heavily incentivized developer, which doesn't exist in Vermont because Vermont doesn't incentivize developers at all to come. So a lot of the problems that we have are statewide problems that are bigger than the stable that we do, we have to try to navigate. Um and that's the that's just as simple as demographics. I mean, you know, think think of big demographics and think about the demand for assisted living facilities, fifty-five and older communities. The the economic demand for that in state Vermont is monstrous and how many do you see being built?
Not a lot though.
Uh.
Not a lot, right, I'm
Sure, but but as far as so my point being is that even though the economic demand and the demographic demand is monstrous, you can argue the largest in the country. There's still not the encouragement for developers to come in and build it. That's the problem. Is that the red tape, there's too much red tape, between the red tape and the nihilism, the state is at, the state, I I worked throughout the whole state of Vermont. The whole state of Vermont is literally at a standstill because of these these issues. And Lutlo is not exempt from that whatsoever. So you you know, I I speak with developers and uh guys that can build whatever they want all over the country, the last place they would ever go to shovel their ground is Vermont. And that those are again issues bigger than ourselves, but they drastically affect, it's drastic.
It's also why Vermont wants to be a desk too.
Sure.
And how it feels like the way it is, how beautiful it is.
Understandably, but it's also it's also gonna be its death song. It's also gonna be why, it's also why there's no young workers here, there's no one to, there's no one to do anything. The demographics be a real song, so and those are those are the identity crises that the state has state law. You know, is that the traditional Vermont, the traditional Vermont aesthetic, but there has to be some compromise or else there will be no more functioning anything, there'll be no more functioning municipalities because there'll be no one working. Once I say this all the time, when's the last time you saw a twenty-eight year old town clerk? When's the last time you saw anyone of age of forty?
How old is Terry? Terry's pretty young.
Sure, sure.
But you know, last year when
Yeah, but she's not a town clerk.
How old is Terry?
I know.
She wasn't that old.
No, exactly, but but
She was like in her thirties or something.
Probably in her twenties too.
I I think when you talk about long term housing, um whether it's rentals or or just if you if you don't have the job to go along with the housing, we where, you know, what comes first, that will come up. They have to come together because housing without jobs in this area helps nothing. It's not gonna make any difference then when you are, you may, you may have a long term rental that you really don't have an appropriate rental for. So.
And in the housing space too, um it says that in two thousand eighteen, median house, uh price of the median house in Lutlo, median price was in the hundred thousands and by two thousand twenty, it's in an eight hundred thousands. The median price of the house in Lutlo, an eight hundred thousands now. So that is key, it's huge.
What's the median, what's the median salary in the state of Vermont?
Something forty grand or something, that much.
Some 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 fifty-five thousand dollars.
Fifty-five thousand dollars.
So that, so you know, that, so again, so I I really, you know, it it's it's tough for me because again my profession, it is, it's like what I see is I I see you know, working to our state, with our press. This is great, and this gives us clear direction, but we also have to learn to triage. We also need to learn to work on what we can control and there are certain, there are things on that board we have zero control over. And changing socio-economic norms and demographics are far larger than the stable. So again, it's it's it, you know, execution, what what can we, what can we tangibly do and how can we tangibly execute it? And really coming up with, okay, an identity of not not Lutlo today, but an identity for Lutlo five years, ten years from now. Uh and that's that's my vision for this board, I may be alone in that. But you know, I otherwise, I just, I uh I I don't, you know, we can, we can work on zoning, we can work on bylaws, all this, but the you know, the actual pushing the ball forward, I I I personally feel we're kind of like, it's too short.
So so really, when we were talking about doing our new um plan. Maybe that's the first thing we try and tackle is what's our five year vision, what's our ten year vision? You know, and not wait for two years.
Yeah.
Because that's not gonna work.
Uh we, Mr. Allden, did you wanna say something?
I need a couple of minutes or whenever you, well, I'll be just a few minutes if you would. Uh just two pieces of good, on on our first conversation of of purchasing affordable housing, um that can be done. I run an organization where we purchase homes, we rent them affordably, we de-restrict them. We're buying eight to nine hundred thousand dollar homes. We de-restrict them in perpetuity. So it can be done if people want it to be done. Or it it can be, it's a we're 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 buying incredibly expensive homes, single family homes. That we turn and rent to families that are set by high fifty percent of median, forty percent, whatever the rate is. And they end up paying, you know, two thousand dollars to live in a four bedroom home in an incredible time. That can be done anywhere if you wanna do it. No one here really wants to do that, you know, it takes an effort, it's gonna have to be a town, sub-agency that does it that purchases these homes funded partly by the town. And that's the only way it's gonna be done here. Just quickly, if if I could. Uh everything you've done here is great. And it's all good ideas in a plan, if I could just read something here. Um it's come from the previous town plan, two nineteen town plan. Although strides to provide a safe and affordable home for every resident. Affordability is primary issue. Village center, strong support for revitalizing the village center. Community policies, encouraging revitalization of large buildings located within the village. Then use a permitting process to enable more diverse homes. Spending housing options, promote village village revitalization, diversifying the economy. Action plans, it goes through all that. Uh local housing issues, these are the just priorities. In twenty nineteen plan. Those are the high priorities, the low priority in your twenty nineteen plan, adopt the short term rental assets. Bear with me for a second. Summary of critical issues, maintain an up to date capital budget, work towards improvement employment issues, development of affordable housing. Provide a plan to reduce traffic flow to the village. Village should implement a plan to acquire properties to provide off street parking. How to do it, employ stuff. That is from your twenty twelve municipal plan. Bear with me, village should immediately employ plans to acquire properties to provide off street parking. Development of affordable housing must be a priority. Provide a plan to reduce distributed traffic flow through the village. Develop a capital needs plan. Work towards the improvement of employment opportunities. That is from, yeah, two thousand four municipal plan. While all this is great. You've had these same things for twenty years. My opinion, what you have to work on, you already know what you need in this town, everyone agrees. They've agreed for twenty years. When are you gonna start working on implementing this stuff, not just putting that on a board, not just putting it on a board?
Jane, I wanna speak to that a little bit because I've been saying for years that um without a I call it a facilitator in our town, which can be um a town planner. Um which we have been, um the 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 town has, I think, made a real mistake for the last ten years, not having a town plan. So when you don't have the town government, your town manager, select board, village boards. When these people aren't all together on the same page. The things that you bring up, rightfully so, don't get done. You can't write them on a piece of paper and not take the action. And Lutlo has not taken that action uh for twenty years. And I personally, right now, unless there's some change going on that I don't see, um we're not in a position to make these changes and um it's a frustration to me and it has been for many years. And um we need good leadership and strong leadership and we need that. Without it, we're gonna come up with the same thing that's already in the old plan.
Yeah.
And a year from now, we're gonna be in the same place in five years.
Right.
So our our main goal should be to hold the hold the town um people that are in charge accountable to make these things happen. Where it's possible.
Right, and that's why, you know, through the state, they're gonna, everything where you come up with has to be implemented, that has to happen. But I wanna tell you, I met with Brennan right before this luck work meeting, and I don't know if he came to that meeting when ours was set up, but he didn't respond to me, sorry, that Brennan asked him to respond to me, to meet with him at the same time, so I'm doing. He said they're gonna take their time and the person that they hired to be the senior administrator slash town planner is gonna be a very qualified person. It's gonna be, they take it to October to find the right person, but they're definitely listening to that, Jane, I wanna tell you that. For other business though, I wanted to have a
Sorry, and I I have the same conversation with Brennan and what I said is not meant to to be insulting to anyone here, especially with the activity, I just wanted to point out that this activity happened to be maybe seven years and then this just gets put in the trough, you know, and and
Five minutes.
you know, what's a town gonna look like in five years or what, twenty years? It's gonna look the same. If you guys just go through this whole process and put two years of your effort into it. Everyone's passionate about it, they really are, everyone on the board is passionate about this stuff, but how does it get done?
Simple word, it takes capital and and basically, um I see this network community that I I work in. Municipal budgets are shoestring budgets because education taxes are so high. So municipal budgets, they they try, they're shoestring budgets, they're there's sub three percent, often even sometimes one percent increases annually. Uh there's no appetite for any type of large commercial, uh any type of large capital uh collection or or uh fundraising or any anything. So it comes down to capital, it comes down to having the money, the resources to do it, finding a way to get a return on using that capital. And I'll just say this, imagine if the town and village started buying property in Lutlo in two thousand and four when the median price was two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Right, so yeah, so these these are the, these are where, all these things are great, they all take, it all takes money. It takes and it takes, it takes the ability to raise it uh through any means necessary. And um municipal, all municipalities statewide are are really suffering as a result of.
Yeah, for the dinner, I asked sixty also, you know, am I unbearable as budgets back then?
Sure.
I believe a possibility that we gotta start somewhere.
Yeah.
And if we just say, you know, it's a system wide problem, it's a state problem, but maybe if we just start with we make recommendations to the select board for the budget that the planning commission really believes we need a planning um position, cause we're a board, you know, we don't, we're not gonna do all these things, we've got to look great, we've got but at least we have some priorities and if we think that affordable housing is a priority. Maybe we say, these are the incentives we think will work, we do research and give that to the select board and then let them help with it. But we gotta start somewhere or nothing's gonna happen.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do you think it. Is it as much capital? Or is it? Doing the work and like, hey, we're gonna really try for this. Um it's something that. You know, after the first year on the select board, like, okay, let's, you know, there is the running of the town, the day to day. That really like, you know, that that should be a small piece of like, okay, sign our stuff, we're like, let's do that kind of stuff. But the actual like work of 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 doing and that's it's hard work, it's long work um. And Jean, maybe you're like, I'm just curious, do you think, do you think it's like, hey, we're gonna commit to like really doing it um?
I I think you need a facilitator. You need a person or two people. You need somebody to help you with that process. You're a group of five people on the select board, three village trustees. You know, you you need somebody to help you focus and work on those things that are important. And that can be done like now.
And you know, what you said about, you know, the property needs to buy in the area, the planning office, and it was almost like a, you know, it's. A mountain can't even climb because there's just so many obstacles.
Yeah.
For you to be able to fix that yourself where you want to. I'm ready to say, they're saying they're gonna look for a person that doesn't. Um in the planning office doesn't come in and has just gotcha moments all the time, like, you know, like. Reasons why you can't do it, we want a person there. Same there, it comes up with this time you can do it.
Or even alterations to your plans, something that can be done.
Yeah, exactly.
It goes through the path.
Oh, these are and and this is the whole thing and just the encouragement of change. Change is is a tough word in Vermont, but it has to happen on us to rebuild Vermont as we know it, so uh that's.
Well, the change, the change is happening. It's not forever.
Yeah.
You guys change.
Sure, that's that's for sure, yeah.
Yeah. It was interesting that you all came to the last public hearing, although I mean the last like were doing the short term rentals. Because there was, you know, people are starting to panic because this time they're actually letting go into effect and. And we're definitely coming out of the woodwork and, you know, saying how it's really bad for the town. And they're gonna take their business elsewhere. I I was thinking about it in my head, good, we need some people to town buy that house. Eventually, you know, you see there's a negative thing at all. Yeah.
Just everyone, um with the affordable housing piece, you know, I would propose that you you create. La, Lutlo Affordable Housing Association. If you do that, you'd be surprised, like in in our case, we have people that, you know, passionate about that. That donate properties to us, that that give us money because they want to see. That happen in certain towns. You know, there's folks in this town, everyone hates the second homeowners, but.
Nobody hates.
There's money that.
I don't know why you say that. You think that from a key mobiles, that's not all of us.
There's there's a there's a divide, right? There's a divide, we won't debate that, but those folks. I guarantee you, if if you get something that's really feel good, they'll give money to that, you know, they'll give money to.
Maybe you're being.
Well, they I I really think.
I I live it every day, I see it.
No, no, I mean.
In my own community, like.
I know, well, maybe that's.
They get houses, stay at us.
If maybe that's something you can help us with.
The fire nice event for um for the fire department.
Yeah.
That was, you know, they they put together a.
Friends radios.
Like that is and.
Wow.
The majority of that money comes from people in our business, although we wanna support it um. Yeah, so I do I do agree with Eric, it's um. Yeah, it's yeah, it's what I can just step so to that.
So. I kind of see that. Like like what we need to do is like, look at these things. Come up with recommendations. This is what we think will move us forward. And it might be we tap into Eric and his experience with affordable housing and write a plan like. We 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 think we should buy up some of the properties that need to be fixed up and there are probably, you know. Wanted to tie, fix them up, create a some kind of a housing authority. And go after grants, go after people who might, you know, do it as a donation, whatever, but come up with a plan. And then give it to the select board. And we're not gonna do it.
Yeah.
But we can certainly flush it out.
But if we don't do it.
And that's what I'm saying, if we don't do it, that's why we need a person, but at least get started.
So I look I looked today in preparation for this meeting to see. You know, there are homes for sale level right now, under two hundred fifty thousand dollars. There's a nice two bedroom for two hundred twenty eight thousand dollars, very livable. It's, you know, every home in this town isn't a million dollars.
Yeah.
It's it's really.
I can tell you those properties are in house. I think I sent them to Noah.
You know, those are properties that could be purchased, de-restricted, put in this program. You have it forever.
But but um I don't I don't wanna be a nice that you're talking about these here. But the the folks that are looking seriously and could afford that house, they need to have work. And and if it's not here right now.
The young ones.
There's there's plenty of work, but it doesn't pay.
That's right. Yes, you're right. There is a chicken in the act, but I mean.
There's money. It's funny.
I mean, the kind of work where someone can pay the mortgage and raise the.
Yeah.
You cannot pay the mortgage though, in this program, they're rations.
Yeah, but you still have to be, right? Still need a.
Agreed. Because the biggest thing you always hear is is housing. I agree on the jobs, definitely.
Are we ready to move on to other business?
Yes, I have.
Are we revisit this? Revisit this, sorry.
So I am just, what is the, before we wrap up, what is that next step after, you know?
I think, yeah, we'll we we'll take I'll put all that together and we'll continue this next month. We'll have this section on the agenda each time. Till we come up.
Well, maybe we just.
Or for some.
So so you've got.
One category.
One category at a time.
Okay.
So you got twenty three, seventeen and eighteen, start with the most, go on to the most um.
And I would and I would suggest we start somewhere we can actually create some momentum.
Yes.
Which I believe would be pedestrian safety. And once again, pedestrian safety is a proper speech.
Well, I wonder I wonder s- I wonder to speak to.
Speech.
That's why I wanted to say that on other business, because I did, um you know, I saw this.
Oh, we switch me on that other business.
Yeah, I wanted to um present our ideas to the trustees, which I did earlier in July. And um Ju- you know, at first Justin had come to me with that idea and then I brought your ideas, I brought his ideas to you guys. And we added to those ideas, those ones I mentioned to the trustees. Um Justin sent me a whole bunch of other stuff in between there. And his stuff on it was like immediately, act on this immediately. I took out some of that stuff, it sounded like it was funny for me about demanding these things happen, but he. You know, he had a list of things that could happen right now, that there's enough money for it and it's possible and why not do it? So I presented all those ideas at the trustees meeting. And it was just like a conversation and like nothing happened. So I'm gonna, you know, get on the next one too and.
Well, and I think.
And talk to.
Justin had a time for it. I kind of feel like what we're missing is maybe a. Um a plan, action, we will that we pre-sent to that it's written and it says, here's our recommendation.
And that's what I did. It was written, they had it ahead of time. They had all of our ideas ahead of time. But I think it takes more than going once, especially you gotta make sure on the agenda it doesn't say discussion. It says action, because we might never get it down. So I'm working with your dad. Your dad's like, this is discussion, you have to get that.
So.
So you're talking to three people who are probably not ready to make a decision. However, if the um town manager or the village manager were to present it. And suggest, let's go ahead and do it. There's money in the budget, let's do it now. It would probably have a better chance of that.
Yeah.
So when you when you um there's just there's. The boards right now seem to to lack that kind of of leadership or that direction. So that something happens.
But it's easy for it to get turned around at the meeting, because I met with Brendan before that meeting and about the short term rentals and it's like. You know, we're just gonna have a public hearing. This meeting is to get to the public hearing. Because that's the next step and we want to have tons and tons of discussion, but of course. That didn't happen with me, because every single person wanted to speak, there's a lot to speak, which I think they should. And so, you know, we got a public hearing is gonna happen and that did get scheduled, so that part of it did didn't work out. But there was a whole lot of commentary for that.
I think Judy does have a big point of like, it doesn't have to be like super laid out, but like. Here's the here's the plan, step one, step two, step three. This is the little um.
The standard operating procedure where it's you presented with, and this is a a tacker. You're presented with the action item, the budget, where the money's coming from, the timeline, sign here please. You know, like so every 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 step of the project, this is what we're looking for. Okay, you like? These are the funds that need to be released for this to happen. We're just asking for your signature on the bottom line.
Yeah, that's that's.
You know, that's, you know, and.
That's the way we operate.
And and then that might take a little time, because you might have to wait to get money in the budget, but we can start. And we can even talk to them about incentives or, you know, about rent rentals and things like that, like. You know, do our own, like find out what kind of incentives can be due. Like I just gave one example of something that I read about. Small, it was pretty trivial, but you know, give them give them those things and say. You know, we think it would be good if you created a budget line for this in the next budget. You know, as we go through this in the next few months, maybe we end up with two or three things. And we give it to the select board and say, this is what we would like to have funded next year. So we will.
Yeah, all I got.
Instead of just always making plans.
And then it builds into the budget.
Right.
That's what I talked about last night. Okay, um I guess I'll take, are we all set?
Yes.
I'm ready. Take the um motion to adjourn. Is that second? The discussion, how was in favor?
Bye bye.
Bye.